I'd like to call the Dover Select Board to order on Tuesday, May 6, 2025 at 6:30 PM. First off, public comments. And Marco. Uh, here we know public comments. Uh, I'd like to read a letter of resignation from Eric DeRosa dated April 21st to Vicky Cappucci, Select Board Chair. Dear Dover Select Board, I regretfully writing to inform, to formally resign from my position as the Economic Development Director of the Town of Dover, Vermont. Effective two weeks from today, with my last being day being Friday, May 2nd, 2025. After careful consideration, I have decided that due to the current circumstances my position faces, I cannot continue to fulfill my duties and responsibilities to the best of my ability. After, after four, over four years of continued pressure, four months, sorry, of continued pressure, systematic and persistent bullying, bordering on harassment, and attempted road blocking of even the most simple processes and tasks from a number of local residents, it is evident that there has been a massive strain, not only on our department and other employees of the town, but my own emotional and physical health. Due to these circumstances, I believe that my continued employment with the town has become an untenable situation, and I must step away from my position. I have very much enjoyed my time at Dover and will always treasure the accomplishments of our work. I understand the challenges my departure may cause to the team and to the town. I do not make this decision lightly and regret any inconvenience it may cause. I am prepared to assist remotely in the transition of my responsibilities to minimize disruption. I want to express my sincere gratitude for the opportunities and support provided to me during my time in Dover. It's been an honor and a privilege to work alongside such talented and dedicated team across the board and across our board and all the departments. Thank you for understanding. I wish Dover Economic Development and the town continued success, and I hope to have the opportunity to collaborate again in the future. Sincerely, Eric DeRosa. Thank you, Eric. I, I personally think you've done outstanding as Economic Director.
I think we've been very, very fortunate to have you, and really you've done. You've brought a lot of new ideas. You've gotten us through some big projects. And I know you hoped to retire from here, and I had hoped to that, too.
Yeah, Eric, can I, Eric, I'm sorry that you, whatever, I don't know the facts of what happened, but what's deeply troubling to me is what I hear in that letter, because as someone who is responsible for overseeing the town, if there are residents that are harassing, as you've described in that letter, the person who's sitting in the role of Economic Director, I'm concerned about having, being able to recruit your replacement. I'm sorry to see you go, and I share the sentiments that both Vicky and Sarah have expressed. But I'm deeply concerned that anyone in the town would be acting that way toward anyone who's working here as a town employee and taking it upon themselves to take actions like that. I, I, I sincerely apologize. You know, as a member of the Select Board, I apologize for whatever you went through. And I hope, hope that we don't end up in a position where anyone takes it upon themselves to act that way toward whoever is in that role going forward.
Same sentiments.
We wish you well.
Thank you.
So you will accept this letter with regret.
Um, we also received a letter after our last meeting from
Vicky?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Did I say something?
Yes, you may.
So, um, I worked closely with Eric on a number of projects, and I just want to convey that I'm very sad to see him go. He's amazing, you know, like, um, Horace Hill in particular, you know, I'm a Trump guy, and he just hit that out of the park. You know, because of who I am and where, where I sit and so forth, I'm, I'm the unofficial complaint department for the town, right? But I'm also, you know, the unofficial compliment department. That's much less utilized by the people in the complaints department, but I am, right? And year after year, um, I've been here a long time. The road crew get the most compliments, right? It's, you know, our rules are fantastic. You drive out of town, they're horrible. You know, to the point where, you know, I'm like, hey, you know, that's nice, but I'm here, too. You know, I do a pretty good job. But they get by far the most compliments. Until this past year, I think Economic Development edged them out a little bit. People spontaneously coming in my office, whoever's responsible for that did a fantastic job and added something of immense value to this town. You know, and I, I feel the same way. And Eric, I'm real sorry to see you, see you go, man. You're, you're a good guy. Um, you're a very ethical guy, you know? And I'm really sorry that this has to happen under cloud of that article last week. You know, that was, that was irresponsible and unethical journalism, in my opinion. Um, it was just a regurgitation of third-party accusations without the proper context. And, uh, it shouldn't have happened. You know, it shouldn't have happened. It would have taken five minutes on Google to provide a little con- context about the situation. They didn't do that. But, um, you know, in my mind, you know, when I go to the grocery store and I look at, you know, and I'm going up to, to check out, and I see the National Enquirer, you know, and says Prince Harry is, is a jerk. You know, I don't think Prince Harry is a jerk. I think, you know, whatever, man, it's the National Enquirer. That's what I think about the former president and above that article and the reporting done on that situation. It's ridiculous. And, um, congratulations on your new adventure. You know, that's a positive. You're moving up and forward.
And not far. And not far. Anybody else have anything to say? We will, you will be missed.
I agree. Very much to all of them.
Uh, we also did receive some correspondence from Mr. Jim McDivitt after our last meeting. Not very happy with the decision by the Economic Department and the decision by the Select Board to not change the programs that we've been running for years and years. And so I have copies of it. If anybody has not read it and would like to read it, um, it's, it's a public document. It's at the home board, so, um, anybody wants to read it, they read it.
Is it going to be attention to the record?
We don't normally do that, Vicky Jeanette. All right. Anything else under public comments? Next is the additions and deletions to the agenda. Uh, we do have an executive session at the end of the meeting. All right, Linda Assessor, update on reappraisal process.
Okay, um, I know this was mail, uh, email PLO. It was done today. Cause I just wrote it today. Uh, the reappraisal is moving forward nicely, I think. Uh, they've sent letters out to the Goose City side of Eastover, Junkie Hollow, um, Palm Road, Jenny Road, all of that whole area. I do want to thank owners who have already called in and set appointments. Some have already been seen, but I appreciate the willingness to accommodate the dab collectors. It makes their job easier, which in fact makes my job easier. So uh, really not much to say. There's been a total of forty-four thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars and ten cents has been paid out to N E N C as of today, which leaves a balance of five hundred seventy-six dollars. Five hundred thousand seventy-six dollars.
I was gonna say, we're, we're, we're in New York. Wow.
I don't know who worked for those guys anymore. No, it's in the reappraisal fund.
And I have to compliment the reappraisal company. The person who came to visit our house was extremely competent, friendly, um, had follow-up, asked me if we had any questions. It was thorough. Uh, I, I was very impressed.
Gets that in the dance he goes through. So, um, I love any one of his questions.
Joe.
Questions. So as many inspections as possible, are they not going to get into all the homes like they did pretty much last time? Or is that?
Where? Uh, being that as far as dwellings, they're right at the very beginning of that. So I don't have an answer. Hopefully as many as they possibly can. Some have already said absolutely not. We do come in the driveway. So we have to respect that.
As I understood, as I understood.
Yes.
As I understood that, I think that's part of the process, that if someone says no, then there's a process to be followed for someone who doesn't let you in, right? Is that correct? They follow. Yeah.
Yeah. And like, I think that they said at the meeting in December, uh, was it in December? Well, in the fall.
When it was COVID.
Uh, that like for condos, if they aren't somehow allowed access, they're going to assume it's as good as the best one they've seen in, of, of the comparable size, um, because they have no other way to go.
And the same with dwellings. We don't let them in. It could be as good as what's up in the peaks.
Anything else for that?
Um, not on reappraisal.
Okay.
I do have an office update.
Yeah.
Uh, just saying, uh, thank you for approving the hiring of Zeb Shipney. Uh, he's doing excellent work above and beyond anything I've asked him to do. Very thorough. Um, and I really appreciated that, and I told him to slow down because I don't want to run out of stuff for him to do. But, uh, so yes, I, I, I hope he's enjoying it. Doesn't want to say. But it's okay. He doesn't laugh. Um, I did meet with, uh, Patrick, and I thought we had a very beneficial meeting. I was, um, getting him up to date on what happens downstairs. Um, and the new camera program, the AP5 computers assist, assisted mass appraisal program. Uh, I can do some things. There is so much to learn in the next year. Um, and the grant list, I don't really have much to say. It's coming along. Should be on schedule.
Good.
So far.
Sounds like you got a lot going on, Linda. Any questions of Linda? Thank you, Linda. Okay, next, Kevin Harrington is here. We're going to go into unfinished business. First thing up is revisit the maintenance agreement to Snow Lake Dam project.
Alyssa.
And Alyssa, Alyssa is here.
Yep, I'm here. I'm here.
Alyssa.
Hi.
Hello.
So our last meeting, we had some concerns about the agreement that are, is a part of the grant. Since that time, uh, Alexandra Horst from Vail and Kevin and I had a team's meeting and we, and discussed what our, our concerns were. So it appears that that form that we need to sign for the grant is mandatory. And so we discussed, explored the opportunity to do a side, a memorandum of understanding where it would delineate everything that the town should, is responsible and everything that Mount Snow is responsible. And file, and do that alongside this and have it filed in the town's records. Uh, and, and Kevin, uh, shepherded that through, and we had an edit or two today, and uh, it basically spells out everything that Mount Snow does, which is basically everything that they're doing now, and the town is going to plow it, pave it, salt it, and sign it. That's about it at this point. And then, but what it is, is there is an end date to this, and it says we should renegotiate. We don't have a lot of time to really hammer everything out. Am I saying it right? And so we will, in good faith, uh, make this, make a, a permanent maintenance agreement by the end of this year. So anybody want to, can I read it? So it kind of takes the pressure off of the town take, doing the retention ponds and all of the, all that other part, so. I appreciate you listening and I, and, and going forward with that. I mean, this is a lot of money. It's 3.6 plus million dollars, and it will really help.
Yes.
Um, so I feel comfortable signing the agreement tonight.
Do we have, what's the name of the agreements?
Well, we, the first one we need to sign is this one from last meeting.
Correct. That'll go with Alyssa in this.
And that needs to be filed tomorrow.
Yep. And then the second one will be between the two parties that will finish by we put a date on it of the end of the calendar year to have just a more formal where we can, you know, talk through anything, dress back, and you go back and forth and just make sure that, you know, we have understanding. We need to go onto the town property to maintain something, it's not come ours. Where we have really, um, good understanding, just moving forward, that can support the project forever. I think that's the goal. The, the big key here is the, the opportunity to see these funds, which are pretty amazing, I think, for both parties. And then I think the second one is as we restore and move forward with Snow Lake, we would have this great partnership that would just continue on past, you know, new ownership or, you know, any of us individuals in the room is what we want to make sure that we have.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Yep, just so, so, uh, the doc, the second document we're looking at is this memorandum of understanding, just to confirm, because I want to make sure the writers are clear on it. It's, it's a memorandum of understanding that outlines, delineates the understanding of the town in Mount Snow as to who's doing, who's responsible for what.
Correct.
With respect to that, and that the goal is by the end of the year, we'll actually negotiate an agreement that kind of formalized. It's not, it's not, it's not.
Thank you.
Of course.
So I make a motion that we authorize the Select Board Chair to sign the maintenance agreement. Snow Lake Dam Removal and Stream Channel Restoration and Reconnection Public-Private Partnership Document.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I just say a few things? Um, I think that it's, it's, I'm so glad that you guys are working together to figure this out in a way that works for both parties. And as far as the grant goes, it's just that the, you know, that there will be maintenance of it, um, by, I think the own, the ownership angle is still something that there's not clarity on, so that should, you know, if you can try and figure that piece out as you're going into your negotiations for the next step of that, that'd probably be a good thing to understand um, regarding, you know, the long-term ownership of who actually owns the culvert. Um, you know, but I think that, you know, as long as the understanding is that, um, because the maintenance agreement that you're signing for the FEMA grant is that you're going to be maintaining what you own. And how you do that, you know, in terms of Mount Snow versus the town is, you know, I think that's, can be handled separately and privately from this, but um, for the purposes of the long-term management of the, um, anything that FEMA would, would fund, that's what they care about, is that it will be permanently maintained by who owns it.
Yeah, and I think that we didn't, we don't, we didn't have time to be able to hammer all that out. Um, so that still is up in the air. We do have a copy of the deeded right of way, and we'll have to go, yeah.
I think that's what's the design of giving this nice runway to make sure that we just have full understanding of. And I think the partnership of, of the resort with the tower, because we've had this eighty-year-old document that exists that we will care for, making sure that, you know, we have a good product back, you know, that has clear minds to, you know, how we support it, so. I think that's, Alyssa, thank you so much. I think, you know, we're, we're feeling excited about this as well, so.
Great.
Yeah, good to see it happening.
Oh, oh, okay. Alyssa.
I just said, it's great. Thank you. Good, good job. I'm glad it's being signed. We can move it forward because that was the only, that was the last piece in the application, so.
So this is FEMA money?
Right, this is a hazard mitigation grant working with, with FEMA.
Are we getting any push, any noises coming down from Washington that maybe this money is going to disappear or partially disappear?
Oh, gosh.
So, um,
Listen, I've heard that.
Just to be clear, so what this, it, what, what we're doing is we're we're putting forward a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program application. However, um, there is a state review committee that will decide what applications are actually going to be submitted to FEMA. So, but this time we won't know until probably July or maybe June, but um, whether or not this application will actually be submitted to FEMA, so it's, but we're, we're taking a stab at it, right? Um, it's a wonderful applic, it's, it's a wonderful opportunity because it's a hundred percent funding um, involving seventy-five percent from FEMA, twenty-five percent from Vermont Emergency Management. We also did put forward, um, a congressionally, um, delegated spending opportunity as well, which would also be FEMA dollars, but through another route. So we have two op, opportunities we're pursuing, and hopefully at least, hopefully one of them will work. Yeah, so.
Anything else? Are you happy with? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you for having me. Um, we just, we moved, we just, yeah, I know. So all in favor?
Aye.
Do you want, you want this? Uh, and then the side agreement, uh, it's going to be Leah signing this.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I make a motion that we authorize the chair to sign the memorandum of understanding on regarding maintenance of Snow Lake Dam and the surrounding area between Mount Snow Limited and the town.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, so this document, are we going to send it to Leah and have her sign it?
That's right. I think if you send that back through, I'll work on that, and then we'll get it back to, back to the town.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you for attending this, right?
Yeah, no, thank you.
Thank you for coming, Alyssa.
Yeah, thank you for helping to figure it out with Kevin. Have a good night.
You're awesome. On that, next, we're going to discuss authorizing the planning grant agreement acceptance. Uh, so, uh, the Select Board Chair has to do that, and it's through the State of Vermont. Um, I have notification that we had forty-five days to accept it. Um, that's why we're at, I mean, I think the board needs to say yes, uh, for the planning grant. And this is put through by the Planning Commission for the next, could you speak to that?
Yeah, I can actually speak to that, right? I, this is the planning, municipal planning grant application to support the viola update work um, that arose from the plan update last year. So this is kind of the next step, and the Planning Commission has basically been waiting for the, for this grant to come through so that they have the money to be able to retain the people with the expertise they need to be able to move forward and get the biolot provisions done. So that's what this is for.
So we've awarded this, and so it's basically, we need to get it going, and I know Jeanette is a big fan of all these, um, grants. So we thank you, Jeanette.
Yes.
So do you do a motion, or is it?
Yeah, I think so, that I can initiate, because it has to be the Select Board Chair.
See.
Yes, to initiate it.
Make a motion that we authorize the Select Board Chair to accept the municipal planning grant awarded to the town of Dover.
Correct.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, consider the letter from Living History Association. So there's copies of it on the table if anybody isn't having.
I don't know where to begin.
No, I've read it.
Does everybody read it?
Read that, and the other amount of papers. Yep.
Um, so Travis, do you know about this letter? Okay, it comes from Jim Desadi on behalf of Living History. He is basically asking for the town to dig holes for these kiosks that, that are the historic three kiosks, I guess. And, uh, it's really hard to discern because there's a lot of information in here. Um, because of one, his physical condition is uh, not allowing him to do that. And, and they're having to dig holes and assemble these kiosks. I, I don't know.
Correct.
Now, the kiosk.
The key thing, the actual kiosk is ready, but the printed material is not ready according to that. Whatever's going inside is not done. So, um, Jim's size, just a clarification of all this, I'll.
Good, Vicky.
We, this is back, how many years ago now? Six or seven years ago. The kiosks were purchased by the town in their Jim Desadi's holdings. We have not given him any other money per se, I don't think, on this project, just for the kiosk. So there's been a misunderstanding between town and Jim. We just would like our kiosses put in, and that project completed. As we were going through another project, as of the last Select Board meeting, this would have been a month ago, he came to us with another proposal, and obviously a Select Board member brought up the fact that something else hasn't been completed. He's brought up a lot of information about the L H A that we were not privy to because we do not follow it as much. So um, if anyone that wants to read the sixth page, you're more than welcome. You get a little more information from Jim Desadi. At this point here, there's really nothing we can do yet, Travis, as long as you're willing to dig the holes, but they're not be ready to be done, from what I can understand. So that's in life. Everyone, I, I, and I personally, you know, with everything going on, I read the article that was in the paper. We did not try to not fund another program, but we just like other programs done, and there was a misunderstanding. It would have been nice if the individual, Mr. Desadi, would have came to the board and explain things a little bit better than putting a letter into the paper, because there obviously is a little bit of backstory on it, and we could have come to a better agreement than hashing it out as we are with him. Unfortunately, he's spending a lot of time in write. So with that said, we are all willing to put up these kiosses once they're done, but they're not done, so we're still waiting. I unfortunately read too much, learned too much about this, so that's what I have to say right now, so there's nothing to be done. What I have to say right now. So there's nothing to be done.
Well, they also are, um, financially strapped and, uh. He, he points that out.
Quite.
Often, yes. Uh, so it would be nice, I believe now that the kiosks are over the historical society.
That's what my understanding was because he had to get them out of his home.
Yeah.
So.
So they're here in town.
You know where they're going?
No, not really. One was gonna be in the common, one was gonna be by the historical society, and I'm not sure when, where the other one was gonna be, but.
Somewhere along the way, right?
Yeah.
We have to ask the kids to calculate their already placed, that's citizen sixth grade.
Sarah.
But the, they, so the, the physical kiosks exist, but the literature portion of it isn't done. It's been through, from my reading of the letter, two or three edits by different people. But it's still not considered finished, and we don't seem to have a specific plan for getting that finished, so the kiosks can go in. And the program can wait to be done. So I'm not sure whether we just ask for those documents back and we have them, we go through and do the editing ourselves. Or we ask it, where we take them as they are and assume they're okay or.
Or get back to them saying, you have a timeline to get this done. Or.
I.
I don't think the town wants to take on editing the school children's. You know, I don't even know, know the topics that they're necessarily on. So I, I personally. Fine, Eric?
Can I?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I read a copy of the letter before I left. It appears that most of the work the sixth graders did will not be included.
That's why we signed on to this thing.
I don't wanna. Wanna really go through that.
Well, it doesn't sound like there's a big emergency. If he can provide the information, maybe then we could get them installed. Uh, you know, but until we can do that. And have the. Actual. Copy that's gonna go on these kiosks, how can we move forward? I mean, we're gonna put up kiosks that have nothing on them. That doesn't make any sense, but it's a matter, does it?
No, not at all.
So, um. I wouldn't close the door on this, but I'd like to. Move it along. So. Yeah.
To, to be clear, though, it's, it's in LHA or Jim DeSade's court to, to move it along. There's nothing we can do.
There, we just need to make sure he knows that. Because I don't know that he is taking. Ownership of getting those documents complete and, and installed into the kiosks. After which. The highway department, the, you know, town crew can install the kiosks, but, and I understand why physically that would be hard for him. But he can have the documents ready and complete. For us, and I'm not sure he knows that we're waiting for him to do that.
I would be happy to contact him because I, he has mowed the Dover Center Cemetery for many years. And I get these kinds of documents all the time. And with every bill. So, uh, I would be happy to tell him that. We are not walking away from it. We will help you, but we need to have the materials we need to get these installed and the exact locations. Does that make sense?
Glad you got.
Okay.
But back to the board with.
Right. Okay.
Well, I think that also the other, the other part of this is the reason that letter came to us. In part was. Uh, to try to explain why we should be funding the original request that he made. That this project interfered with us funding. But my understanding from our other board member is that. The date that he proposed for it, the town hall isn't available. That, um, the details on it have been fluid, shall we say. And so perhaps if, if Mr. DeSade wants us to reconsider it, we need to ask him to resubmit.
Oh, that's. There's Dan, there's Dan.
Daniels.
You're, you're muted, Dan. You're still muted.
Still muted, Dan.
Well, I'll be happy to include that in, in what I send to you. As well. We'll need some real information about it and a clean day and a, yes. Okay. I don't know where we were. And we move on. Everybody good to move on?
Yeah, true.
All right. Highway, we need to review the twenty twenty-five paving bids.
Yes. Travis, you're up. Paving. We had three bids this year. We're all fairly close in price. Um. Basin Brothers Trucking, an estimate was ninety-three, ninety-five per ton. All states construction was ninety dollars and forty cents. Springfield paving was ninety-two point six. Um. I am totally fine with giving All States another shot at it. Um. They're the ones that had to come back and do that paving. A number of years ago, but, uh, I believe. They seemed really bummed last year that they didn't get it and I, I think that. They do nice work. I just think we got some bad mix that year and obviously. Know that. Too late in the season, so. You know, I did check in on scheduling with everybody too and. And yes, it take place prior to the date we have set. The finish date, September twenty-seventh, so. I'm, I'm finally going with the lowest price of. Ninety dollars and four cents for our paving this year.
So I make a motion that we authorize Travis to fire All States Construction. Um, for twenty twenty-five paving, uh, rate of ninety dollars, forty cents per ton for a total of five hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars.
Any other discussion? All in favor? I. Okay.
I didn't hear it, so.
We're taking the lowest bid.
Okay. We usually do.
So did you say you abstained, Dan?
Yeah, well, I didn't hear the whole thing, so it would be foolish for me to say I understood. But I looked at it and I have no problem with anything that Travis does.
Okay, so Dan is abstaining. Okay, now we're gonna look, uh, at the bridge, uh, Blue Brook, consider bridge repairs on Blue Brook Road. So, we received a report from the state of Vermont from B Trans. And. Travis is gonna tell us. What's going on with this?
It was a pretty concerning report. This bridge is inspected every two years from, from B Trans. Um. It's, it's in. It needs repair to the decking or a replacement. Um, I've met with the B Trans engineer on site last week. He thinks that we can get away with repairing it by another, you know. Eight to ten years at the most, so that we can plan for a replacement. Um, I have, I do not have any idea on cost of that yet. I've reached out to a couple of contractors for pricing just to see what. Roughly what we're looking at for the repairs. Or if we should, should just look at. You know, trying to really do this debt, but.
So we have a certain timeframe to get back to them and.
Yeah, and, and they're looking for. You know, they're looking for a plan of action, basically, this, you know. So ever seek, gonna be seeking bids to. If the repairs done or. You know. It's not in dire need, doesn't need to be closed or anything, this.
Question, so. If we fix it. It's at our dime. If we replace it, doesn't the state pay for a portion of it? Isn't that how that works on bridges?
I can apply for a grant. Um, a structures grant. Um, there also is class two grants, but it's not a class two road, so that I couldn't, I couldn't use that one, but. Yes, there are structures grants that I could apply for. We would be on the book for the repairs.
Right, a hundred percent.
Yeah, and the light is, I believe. The bridge was built in the. Late forties, early fifties, so it's got, it has exceeded its lifespan.
Right.
You know, we've gotten the light out of the bridge, plus some. Um, so if. You know, I think if we can do the repair, then we can start planning for the replacement of it. You know, and then we'll know what to. Look forward to it, what font need to seek and everything.
So we have to tell them our plan of action in sixty days.
Yeah.
Which was from April twenty-third. So it does, does give us some time, but we need to remember that.
Yep.
Um.
Well, we are, I am reaching out and trying to get some numbers and that way we know what. Our plan of action will be.
Right, so we'll, we will see this again.
Yeah, oh yeah, you'll see this. And this is the bridge at the Lawrence of Blue Brook, right on. So you're aware.
Well, it's also, you're getting some traffic, one would pay for that road.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
That's why I, that's why I wanted to speak with the engineer.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, yeah, okay, so you'll keep us updated.
Yeah, I'll keep you updated.
Sarah.
Um, the contractors who do the repairs, would they, would they also be qualified of, for doing the replacement?
Right.
So we could theoretically ask them for both numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Good. Thank you, Travis. All right, now we're gonna move to police. How was Spain?
I'm back here. It was hard to come back, but I'm.
Okay.
For you guys.
We're gonna consider new cruiser purchases, is, as in plural.
Um, so the first one, well, they're both already planned for, but the first one to talk about in November. Uh, we all agreed to spend up to seventy-five thousand on the twenty twenty-four topo and all the upfitting. That is finally in the shop being built. Um, we changed a couple of options around and the price may be a little bit lower than originally thought. But I should have by the end of the week, um, final numbers on that, so I'm just looking for. Permission for when I get that to cut the check so we can keep everything rolling and take delivery of that as soon as possible, because we're down a group.
We have to vote, we've already approved it.
Yeah, but it's for.
It's already approved, so I'm just letting you guys know it's in the works. It should be in the next couple of days. I should have a final number and I'd like to go ahead and just.
Oh, since you're down a cruiser, it sounds like you need it.
Yes. So yeah, yes, it was already approved. It's just a matter of. The time is coming to cut the check very soon. I want to be able to do that.
So won't that be in the warrants, when that week, when they, we have to cut it?
He's gonna already probably take and deliver it by the time we see that. Yeah. Um, could. So we don't know what the final number is, so.
No, but it will be under that seventy-five.
Okay. Um, uh, anybody have problems with that?
No. We don't have to make a motion on it.
No.
We've already voted.
Right.
Then the second thing is the Subaru that is budgeted for next fiscal year. Those are coming off the production line and disappearing. Uh, they don't stick around. Uh, I've been working with a couple of dealerships, but one that's most helpful is Bennington Subaru. That's not their name. Um. Longgrain Subaru of Bennington. Um, I have a price for the type of car we need, which again is the black and needs to be automatic. Um, it's just over thirty-eight thousand, what, a couple thousand dollars? Which was to be expected and planned for. Um. But because they're coming and going so quickly, I'm afraid to come July first. It might be really hard to leave my handle. So the dealer is willing to look for one ASAP for me and. If he can get one, he's gonna expect us to buy it. So I talked to Marco. Who says the funds are there and available, need be. I guess I'm looking to see what your thoughts are on us. If we can get our hands on one. Purchasing it now. Before the fiscal year turns over, so that we don't lose the opportunity of getting one, because come July, there's no guarantee that we'll be able to get our hands on.
Many has to get all retrofitted and everything as well.
Yes, so the thirty-eight thousands just to get.
Right.
Out the door and we're budgeted into fifty-one, I think it was, fifty or fifty-one. And we'll be well under that with what I have. Voted from our upfitters for that.
Marco, we have enough money in the.
We do.
So I.
So it's kind of the same thing. I'm looking pretty much for, for permission. If this guy says, I got one, it can be here in three days to. You know, the next Monday that we can cut a check for that.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I make a motion that we authorize the police chief to purchase a, um. Subaru budgeted for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year in the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year.
You know, most, sorry, some miles or not.
Um, with the, with the purchase price of approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars.
That's, that's, so the price they gave me was thirty-eight thousand, two hundred seventy dollars. That can fluctuate depending on what that card. If they find a car, it may have a couple extra or a couple less features.
How about not, not to exceed forty thousand?
Sure.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Hearing done? All in favor? Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Is that it for the police department?
I want to get suburbs now.
Yeah, well, with the tariffs and everything, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, we're gonna move to the board of liquor control.
I make a motion, we go into.
Any second?
Second.
Yeah.
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
All right.
I.
Go, Sarah.
Uh, I made a motion that we don't have any, okay. Yes.
Can I just, um, yeah, we do that same thing, that.
Right.
Subject to succeed of required documents and payments, so.
Uh, I make a motion that we approve. The first class license for two tannery, the Inn at Mount Snow and the Grand Country Deli. Object to receipt of all required documents and payments. Second.
Any discussion? All set? All in favor?
Make, make a motion that we approve the third class license for two tannery and the Inn at Mount Snow, subject to receipt of all required documents and payments.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I make a motion that we approve the consumption permit, the Black Ember Bril and Grand Country Deli. Subject to receipt of, of required documents and pa- and payments.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? All in favor?
Make a motion, make a motion.
All right, we have the consent agenda, which is to approve the minutes of April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of April fifteen, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Folks, any changes or corrections? All in favor? And we have the warrants of April twenty-six for one hundred twenty thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars and thirty-four cents.
I make a motion, we approve the warrants of April twenty-six for one hundred twenty thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
I.
I. They can abstain. Okay. FYI, open meeting law for boards and committees packet available.
Do. No, I, before I took to them all, I had, um, done a webinar with them. Um, and I think it's some good information that perhaps all board members should have.
Great.
Um, so if you'd like, it was kind of hard to, but you can access it on the VLCT website, if you have a login.
Um.
So you can do that, or if you want me to make paper copies, I can do that as well.
Well. You'll gather the only one.
Yeah.
Uh, planning commission meets May twelfth at six thirty PM. VLCT Effective BCA Property Tax Assessment Appeals Hearing and Training. Uh, is coming up too. The LCT Effective BCA Property Tax Assessment Appeals Hearing and Training, uh, is coming up too, it's on May fourteenth. From nine to two thirty, and you can register, I told them I could not. Make it, so it'll be great if somebody can. Um, Dover Water Task Force meets May fourteenth at five PM.
Yep.
Are there any liaison reports? So we're gonna go move into executive session for personnel. At.
Seven twenty-one.
Seven twenty-one.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, thanks.
What, are we done on the card?